All right, time being seven o'clock, I will call the meeting to order. Just a reminder that the meeting is being videotaped. And with that, we'll get started. We have, first item on the agenda is the acceptance of minutes.
I will move to accept the minutes from the February, excuse me, February 25th, 2016 meeting as currently constituted.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? That's five zero. Moving on to chairman's report. First, everyone welcome, thanks for coming tonight. It's always great to see you. I just have a couple of quick updates. First, I just wanted to sort of give a big round of thanks to the Maynard Education Foundation. They hosted their annual Taste of Maynard, which has been rebranded to be called The Taste, because now they're inviting folks from all over to be restaurant vendors there. It was extremely well attended, and I just wanted to sort of thank those various faculty and administration I saw attending the event. Mrs. Messina, I saw Mrs. McVale, Mr. Sinopoli, I saw Kevin Caruso, and we also saw the entire Spanish immersion team, families and kids and everyone. So I know a lot of folks came up to me and they were just so happy to see all the teachers also supporting the community and coming to Maynard if they didn't live here. It's just a great way to just show how our small community really pulls together for a great cause. So that was wonderful. I saw members of the school committee, and I'm sure there's people I didn't see, but it was a great time, so just thanks for all their hard work. Maynard Education Foundation is doing great, great fundraising work that's benefiting our teachers via the grants they apply for, so, so thank you to them. Another update I wanted to bring, is I've been attending the Community Preservation Committee meetings fairly regularly, and then bringing back updates to the full committee is sort of how they're doing with their process where they're going to pick proposals to fund for this funding cycle. So, right now, they're down to, I think, three proposals for the year. One is under the historical, it's to redo the top of art space, the cupola. Another one is the Green Meadow Playground Funding. They've submitted the grant, as we're all familiar with, the $150,000 grant. And then, I know, I'm not sure of the status of the soccer field proposal, but I know that's considered something at this point. You know, I don't know the intricacies of the CPC process, but those are the three they seem to be talking about this year. At the last meeting, I didn't attend it, but I did hear from the playground committee parent group that they were leaning more towards funding the $100,000, and even that is hard to say, because they haven't voted, they're just talking and sort of brainstorming ways to, to help with the various projects. So the next meeting is the key one, it's going to be next Wednesday, March 16th, at Town Hall at 7:00 PM, and I believe they're actually going to vote on what to fund. So I've been encouraging folks that are interested, it's a great way to go and show your support for projects that you support, so I encourage everyone who can attend to attend. You don't have to speak, you just show up and show your support. So we would love to see a great show of support for that project. I know it has support across the school system, because it benefits us in so many ways. Other than that, all I wanted to say was good luck to the cast of Grease and the crew. I know that that's all the buzz around town. I was in Town Hall and everybody was talking about it, and there's just so much excitement, and I think so much thankfulness that the auditorium is open. So, I will, I will leave it at that, but good luck to everyone, please pass that along. Other than that, I can pass it over to Bob for your superintendent's report.
Okay. In the past, we've talked about the governor's budget and charter school debates, and so I have some white papers from Massachusetts Association of School Committees. One is on the position paper on charter schools, the other one is a position paper from MAS and ASBO, which is the Massachusetts Association of School Business Officials, and that's in regard to the governor's budget. So it's just some easy reading material for the school committee if you're interested. And I know some of you are very interested in those topics, so I figured I'd share that with you. That came across my desk late today. Something that was kind of important to me, came across, that I actually saw at the Massachusetts Association of Schools Superintendent's Winter Conference, was that the National Alliance on Mental Illness is having a campaign. And last week, I was the first superintendent in Massachusetts to sign on as the CEO's Against Stigma Workplace Pledge. And so, the CEO Against Stigma is the NAMI MAS Campaign, and then NAMI is the National Alliance on Mental Illness. Many of you know that one of my professional mantras is health and family first, and too often, people consider physical health as necessary, and I believe we need to include mental health as just as necessary. Stigma should never interfere with the health of our friends and colleagues, and that's why I signed this pledge, and I'll be highlighting our community's supports as we go along in regards to mental health, so, just wanted to share that with you. Also, I see Mark Sinopoli here in the audience, and you talked about The Taste of Maynard, and I had an interesting email that came across my desk from the Maynard Education Foundation, mentioning how that, you know, they were thrilled about some of the work that he had done, and they recognized him at The Taste. And Principal Mila had a really nice quote in response to that, that I wanted to share with the group, and Principal Mila said, "Mark is a wonderful member of our school and contributes in meaningful ways. I wish we, I wish he had a twin." Just wanted to share that. In regards to the Libre Mat that you've heard about before, Ally Severance is a member of the Board of the Friends of Maynard Public Library. This week, she sent Jennifer and Kate an email expressing their interest in helping to stock the Libre Mat that we've set up. She's reached out to the people who handle the donations of children's books to the library, and to see how they might use some of those resources to help us. So this is just another example of the wonderful community that we work in, where community groups work collaboratively to support each other. I can't thank them enough for that. Last night, I attended the viewing of the documentary Most Likely to Succeed at the Lincoln Regional, Lincoln-Sudbury Regional High School. Maynard had a great representation of parents, administrators, and school committee members at the event. This was my second viewing, and I had read the book in between the two viewings, so, you know, it really, seeing it a second time, I just learned that much more. In addition to the viewing, they had the curriculum director from High Tech High School participate in the discussion after the movie. The dialogue was so rich, I felt like I learned more about applied learning and project-based learning. And I don't know if there was a few other people here tonight that were attended, I don't know if anybody would like to talk about what they observed or their impressions, so I don't know. I know Beth Lynn was there, Jennifer, you were there, if you have any other insights you'd like to share.
I just, I just enjoyed, it was actually very emotional, the movie, which I think I was surprised by, that would be much more heady, as far as just like going through, this is why we like project-based learning, and I just, I just thought it would just be more heady. And it really just honed in on being able to bring each child along and being able to find, help them to really work through problems, and do that in a way that's creative and imaginative, and letting them take these risks, real, all the things that we're talking about, that we care about. So, I don't think that we need to become, the other nice message I heard from the curriculum directors, you don't need to become a high-tech high to be able to engage in these kinds of things. And that, a lot of the stuff that we're doing, he mentioned, he was rattling off different things that he knew that schools were doing, that really brought in different elements of project-based learning, and a lot of his stuff that we're already either have had, been doing for a long time, or project lead the way, we're starting to bring in, fold into the decision moron with nature-based learning at Green Meadows, so, and the capstone project senior year, that's another thing that you'll soon be doing, that came up. So, it was just really exciting to feel the energy and to feel like we are focused, really hoping to bring that into the fold as part of the learning for students. That's great.
So, that event is just one example. We've really been collaborating with Lincoln-Sudbury Regional High School and Concord-Carlisle School System to coordinate events like that and maximize the experience for all of our communities. Even though last night was Most Likely to Succeed, next Wednesday is going to be a book talk with Julia Lithcott-Hames, which I had shared flyers about that, at Concord-Carlisle Regional High School. So the natural question is, what's going to be happening in Maynard? And I'm really excited and pleased to inform the school committee that I have secured a presentation and a book signing with Fernando Reimers on March 30th at Maynard High School at 7:00 PM. I have a flyer here, and there's flyers in the back, if anybody's interested. Just so you know, Fernando Reimers is the Harvard Graduate School of Education Ford Foundation Professor of Practice in International Education. His most recent publication, which is on the flyer, just came out this month, and it's a book that describes how different nations define core competencies in the six countries, including China, Chile, India, Mexico, Singapore, and the United States. I've seen him speak on several occasions about global learning, and each time, I'm amazed at how ethereal he is, and yet how down-to-earth and pragmatic he is. So he's really an amazing person to meet, and to hear. I think, I'm hopeful that we're going to have a great turnout. I know we had a good turnout at the last couple of events that we've seen and done, so if anybody would like to pick up a flyer, this is the next big event, and it's happening in Maynard on March 30th at Maynard High School. So I share that in the back. Very excited about that. The last item I have to talk about is the Green Meadow Traffic Study. So really, the school committee hasn't had a lot of time to see this, in fact, they just got it tonight, and I wasn't really planning on presenting this tonight, however, we did ask the town administrator to fund a traffic and parking study for Green Meadow last year and Crow Park Parking Lot. That study was completed by Green International Associates, and tonight, I did share a copy of that with the school committee, and for some of you, it's your first time, most of you. There are three pages that are tabbed on it, and I can kind of summarize, the questions I posed for the study were, how bad is traffic on 117, and does Tiger Drive need to be a one-way? And then, how do we improve the traffic at the Green Meadow School? Because I've heard a lot of parent concerns about the traffic being bad at Green Meadow. Now, in fact, some people, when I talked about doing this study, said, "Oh, you're never going to solve that problem." They've tried to solve it millions of times. So I said, "Well, I'm not going to solve it, but I bet you if we get a study, at least we'll have some ideas." And so, to summarize what's in this document, because it's a huge document, there's all kinds of numbers on, they literally clicked the traffic and figured out, do we really need to make Tiger Drive a one-way? They don't think we do. They did come up with three different plans as to how to improve the traffic around Green Meadow, and I've tabbed those for you. There's, the, the first plan is really just like a double crescent in front of the Green Meadow, and it's the least expensive and most minimal plan. And then the other two plans involve a drop-off area, kind of where we affectionately call the Green Meadow Forest. It's an area where a lot of people play, but it is an area that, when looking, when people, engineers who do this, try to figure out how to keep traffic separate and keep things moving, this was their design as to how to deal with that. And so, when Principal Dankner was interviewed, he said, "Will we release kids on that side of the building?" And so that's where they came up with the idea of putting that drop-off over on that side of the building. So those are the three big plans, and so, one of the things that the town's been talking about, you know, CPC funding, there's always free cash funding, the concern is that if they were going to consider funding this, the town, they would kind of have to put it on the warrant articles for town meeting, that has to be kind of rushed. When we hired green consultants, the game plan was, once they had this done, which they only, I only got it emailed like last week, I'm really surprised, but I got it emailed last week, and the plan was to do a presentation for the board of selectmen and a presentation for the school committee, and then if they got approvals to figure on something, the town administrator could figure out how to work that into the budget. So, because, I think there is interest in doing this, because I guess maybe we have been challenged that we've got to solve a problem, and nobody's has figured this out in years, the town administrator asked me, "Do you, do we want to follow that process and have the board of selectmen meet on the 15th next Tuesday and have a presentation done there, then have a presentation done on the 24th?" But that makes it very tight for him to make any recommendations for the warrant article by the end of the month. If there's going to be a lot of discussion about it, I think it might make sense to consider having a joint meeting on the 15th with the board of selectmen, and, you know, I haven't run it by him, but I wanted to run it by you to see if you might be interested in having a joint meeting then, in having some general discussion now, and then deciding whether you want to have a joint meeting with them, or if you just want to wait till the 24th. So those are kind of the options I'm laying out for you to consider tonight, as you're really just looking at this for the first time, so I'm sorry about that.
I know I flipped through the, the three possibles, and I know that just personally I have some concerns, and that doesn't mean that it's a bad project, but I think that there's, just even looking at it quickly, for the, you know, since we've been here at six, I just feel that there's enough that personally I want to talk about it. So whether we talk about it, or we talk about it with the selectmen based on the timeline, I just think that when we look at it, and when we look at Green Meadow and the needs and things, I just, I don't feel that any of the options are solid. But I think it's just because it's an engineering company putting together a traffic plan, right? I mean, they probably do malls, they probably do retail space, I'm sure they do schools, we wouldn't have engaged them. But some of the things that they are suggesting, other schools are trying to get away from doing, like a concierge drop-off service and pickup service, like, I just have, I want to talk about it, so I guess that's my point. I don't want to talk about it now, because it hasn't really been explicitly called out on the agenda, but, so I would just say, well, we need to talk about it, but, you know, whatever you folks want to do is fine, so, and when are timelines? So we're rushed because of, they're, they're thinking of funding it if we're on board for May, which means they have to print everything soon.
I think we're going to have to talk to the board of selectmen at some point anyway, right? So maybe it just makes sense to do that joint meeting? That would be my vote, because otherwise, we're meeting separately, they present the information twice, but then ultimately, we're going to have to communicate about it.
Yeah. I like the idea of a joint meeting also, and give us about, you know, the next four or five days to chew through this a little bit.
So do we think we have at least a quorum to show next Tuesday? If everyone wants to take a second look at their calendars, that's fine. I could be there Tuesday under that, and we just need at least three of us.
It'll be at seven o'clock, next Tuesday, at Town Hall?
And it might not be first, it could be that they take us at eight, we can always, I would just ballpark it sometime that night.
Yeah, I could be there.
I can make that work.
So, it sounds like what we're telling Dr. Girardi is to work with the selectmen and see if they'll agree to a joint meeting, and we'll show up on Tuesday, and Dr. Girardi will give us an update via email that that's all going to happen? Does that sound?
I will do that.
Like a plan?
Yep. I'll put it on my notes, contact town administrator.
All right.
And that's the end of my notes.
Next up, Janelle Carr, Student Representative Report, welcome.
Evening.
Hi.
How's it going?
Good. So, on Tuesday, we had the winter sports awards that recognized all of the winter athletes, and a lot of students won awards, like Unsung Hero, Coach's Award, so on and so forth. And our basketball team actually won their semifinal game against Worcester Tech, I think it was, and so they are going on to Framingham, Framingham State University to play in the finals, which is very exciting. And then also, we have the play, as previously mentioned, that's opening this Saturday, which is very exciting, a lot of students have been putting hard work into that, so. And we have March Madness coming up on March 18th, which is just a day that we do a bunch of fun events, and all grades are involved, and it's just a good experience for everybody.
What's it like? What's March Madness like? Or is it your first time? It's not your first time.
No. This, this will be my third March Madness, and it's a lot of fun. We do stuff like, like relay races, and baking a cake, and making a poster for your grade, and the teachers go around and judge the cakes and the posters, and everyone watches the relay races, and it gets very competitive at times, but it's definitely fun.
That's awesome. Is it around classes or no classes that day?
I think we have some classes in the morning, but...
That's good to have a break.
Yeah.
That's nice.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
I want to try the cake.
Any other questions?
Any questions? That's great.
Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have citizens' comments. So this is a time, if you want to speak about something that's not going to be spoken about later on the agenda, so if you're here for something specific, we're happy to hear from you. I may say it's going to come up in the budget talk, or it might come up in the curriculum talk, but don't take that as anything other than us trying to adhere to open meeting law. So, if anyone has anything they'd like to say, we've got a microphone, you just, we just need your name and what you'd like to talk about. All right. Moving along, we have the 2016-17 school calendar update, Mrs. Godash.
Yes, thank you. So we are not completely finished with the school calendar, but we did want to put out a draft, which we have in the packet. And the things that we have decided on are the start date, the decision to have the eighth of November as a professional development day, and the end date and vacations. The things that we are not decided on are all of the half-release days, half-days, because we're looking at trying to align those and maybe do some different things in some different ways. So essentially, again, final sort of decision, we will have staff back on August 29th for two days of professional development, and students will start on the 31st. That is different than this year because of the election day, both the administration throughout all of the buildings felt that it was safer and better to allow the elections to happen without students in the, in the buildings, just due to traffic concerns and things of that nature.
So no school on election?
No school on Election Day for students. We will have teachers in for professional development on November 8th. And then currently, the last date of school, I'll make sure I get this ninth right, is, sorry, not the ninth, is June 13th, barring snow days.
Inevitable, snow days.
So if you're still working out the professional development days, do you want us to hold off on officially?
I would prefer to, because I think we, we can have, we have a professional development committee meeting on Monday. I have sent them out this draft of the calendar so that we can look and see if we can align some pieces, so if we could have a few more, a little bit more time, that'd be great.
But you feel pretty confident if folks are asking, that first day for staff is the 29th?
Yes.
As well as the students' first day, and then the potential last day, which we all know fluctuates based on snow.
Correct. The other thing that I can announce is the Thanksgiving holiday will be November 23rd through the 25th. Those will be, the 23rd will be no school. The December vacation will be December 26th through January 2nd, which is that Monday, and then February vacation will be February 20th through 24th, and April vacation is April 17th through the 21st. And of course, those two line up with the other districts and that.
Great. All right, so unless the committee has an issue, I think it's fine to hold off unofficial sign-off? Okay, great. School Committee Budget Subcommittee Update. Bob?
Well, I'll lead off with the committee. So the, the School Committee Budget Subcommittee reviewed the transportation and activity fee ratios that, and Pete has provided you with that data, because we had discussed that as a primary discussion point at our last meeting, whether we should consider that. For this year, the Budget Subcommittee does not believe that these fees should be raised for fiscal year 17, and they are recommending that Colleen begin the bus registration process, so I'd like to make sure that we get a decision on that. In addition to that, in regard to the general budget, we're really thankful that the town administration recommended a level service budget, $16,756,160. However, that's still $111,000 short of our requested budget, which includes several important technology positions that we know the town has funded the technology, now we need the staff to actually run it. So while we're grateful that, you know, they have been generous over the years, and that's a decent budget, it still isn't quite enough to staff the, the school system as we want to and feel we need to. So as always, the Budget Subcommittee is continuing to review the budget to determine efficiencies. During the budget proposal process that was developed and presented several times at board of selectmen, town meetings, and those sort of things, FinCom meetings, during that process, the Budget Subcommittee did identify a second-grade class size that was small enough to reduce one teacher, and so, from the second-grade team this year, and so that will give us some savings, but it doesn't cover the 111, so it's still not enough. So the Budget Subcommittee is going to continue to work at looking at scheduling as a way to find other efficiencies to be able to fund those positions that we feel are needed.
And that's second grade, that's for kids in first grade that will be in second grade next year?
Correct. So I don't know if you remember in the, in this budget packet, but there's actually a table that shows that the second-grade class, the second-grade team of teachers this year consists of six teachers, and they have a class size of 21.3. Next year, because the class size is getting smaller, we'll only need five teachers, and the class size will, the average class size will only be 22.4. And by the way, the average class, class size is a little deceptive, because our Spanish immersion program has class sizes of 25, so really...
It's off by like one or two.
It's off by one or two, because the classes will actually even be a little smaller than that. So, so it's really not a significant change with one less staff member from what the teachers were teaching last year as far as class sizes. But we have that documented in this table, in this document that we've shown many times at different meetings already, so.
I have a question about, so if you reduce the class size, if you reduce the teacher this year, this next coming year, what happens the following year?
So the classes don't usually get bigger, they get smaller. So this is pretty common, every year, last year, we reduced, if you look at this table, I don't know if you, do we have extra copies, Colleen, or?
Page...
Oh, there's extra copies in the back, I don't know if you have it, but if you look at page 37 of this document, last year, we reduced grade one from six to five teachers. So if you look between 2014-15 and 2015-16, the class size went down, and there was no need for an additional teacher the following year. We have had years where there's been anomalies, so actually, when I first got here, we had a year where there was like a super big class, and so one year, the first grade had six teachers and everybody else had five teachers. The next year, that teacher had to be transferred to second grade because that bubble went through the system. We're not dealing with bubbles now, we're dealing with some classes getting smaller, and you can see that, that last year, that was the case in first grade, and this year, it's the case in second grade.
And also, just part of that answer is, we look at this every year very carefully.
Yeah.
So we wouldn't, you know, we, we literally look at the class sizes every single cycle, and it starts back in the fall as well, it's not something we look at just in March or anything, just to give you some background. But we look at that too, because, you know, we all have kids in there too, so, we hear it, we get it.
And could I, could I also add, so I have a son who's going into, into second grade next year, so he's part of the grade that will be affected by the reduction, so I had concerns about it, but it, in discussing with Jennifer and with Bob, one of the things they're looking at too is adult-to-student ratio, so within a regular classroom, there's usually a second adult who's there helping, so if you look at the numbers, we were comparing to other schools and...
But there, as far as I know, well, I, it's been a while since I was at Green Meadow, but there isn't, there isn't an assistant in the whole...
Not full-time, yeah, yeah.
There's more than one, but there's not a general...
Right.
No immersion.
Right.
So you can't...
Well, no, when you look at statistics, like our high school statistics, our staff ratio is, it was, it started, it used to be about 10 to 1, 10 staff faculty members to one every student, no, vice versa, 10 students to every one. That'd be crazy. But, yeah, that'd be great. It would be nice, hey, nice problem to have. But anyway, you know, it's, it's up to about 14 to 1, but still, that's the way the state does it, because we actually do have a lot more staff than you realize, when you look at the number of paraprofessionals there in the classroom, and oftentimes, they're there maybe to support one child, or they're there to support groups of children. And so, it really is a factor that needs to be considered. We do have, when we looked at similar-sized school districts, we actually have one of the largest numbers of paraprofessionals per school in our Green Meadow School, so we do have a large number of additional staff.
Couldn't that be because we've gone above and beyond to try and get the special, you know, special education piece to have, to choice special education kids into Green, into Maynard, because I know that's something that was a mission for you for a while. So then, we do, we do need the extra assistance, but at the same time, those people are focused on those one-to-ones or one-to-twos, and they're still not available to help with the regular learners.
Well, so in addition to, one-to-ones are a small number actually, but they're a significant number, and those are very important. Obviously, if a child needs a one-to-one, that's super important. We do have a lot of special ed teachers who seek groups of kids, so they know that they have to go to this classroom and spend two hours, because there's groups of kids who need support. We also have instructional aids, which really are, they're part of the Title I program, so those paraprofessionals come in and again, work with even larger groups of kids within different classrooms. And then we have the kindergarten paraprofessionals, which are what, literally, you know, every kindergarten has a full-time aide. So we do have lots of different paraprofessionals that are in lots of different classrooms for varying amounts of time and varying amounts of support.
I guess the, the concern I have, the question I have, is that, you know, I have a regular learner, and she's going right through the system, and she's been great, but there have been several years where she's kind of gotten forgotten, because she's quiet, she doesn't work okay, and whatever, so she, she kind of gets lost in the frame because you've got, you know, the higher-activity kids that don't necessarily require an aide, but the teacher has to maintain a classroom, and they don't really have time to deal with the kids that kind of are just...
Well, so I, I would say that six, I think it's six or seven years ago now, that since Principal Dankner came in, there's been a huge focus on differentiated instruction, so that the teacher can group kids differently, can work with, so that the mass in the middle gets the attention they need. Um, and I have to tell you, Fowler has done some really incredible work in Angry Meadow in the last two and a half years on using data. So we provide them with other tools to help identify exactly where kids are and try to help them as much as possible. So we actually have put a lot of resources in professional development on differentiated instruction and using data to try and prevent that scenario that you're concerned about.
And I guess that's, that's my, and it's not, I'm not knocking the teachers, I'm not knocking, I think that that data is fantastic, but it's a matter of allowing the teachers to be able to do that differentiated instruction when they're trying to manage, you know, twenty-some-odd kids in class that, you know, you know, again, some of them might be just quiet monitors, but some of them are, are active and you kind of have to put out the.
Yeah, so when I was a teacher for eight years, when I got twenty, twenty-five kids in my classroom, I had to own all of them. I had to provide support for all of them. I had to look at all their individual skills. And, you know, equal isn't always even. That's a concept that's hard for people to gather. But yes, there are students with special needs and in order for them to get access, they need some extra support, whether it's support from the teacher in differentiated instruction, whether it's support from having a paraprofessional or maybe even pull-out classes or extra time on task. Those are all things that we do look at and we provide. And we've been doing it, in education, we've been doing it for years, even way back when I was teaching, which is like twenty years ago. But teachers are even better at it now. I can tell you, I am so impressed with our teaching staff that they're so good at differentiating instruction that, would it be nice to have a ton of additional staff? Absolutely. But, you know, that's part of the reason that the school committee has a fiscal responsibility to make sure that we have the appropriate amount of staff.
And I guess that, that was, that was how I started the conversation. I didn't mean to kind of take over. I, it was more that I realized that there are a lot of staff, but there's a lot of, it seems a little bit deceptive or deceptive is probably the wrong word. So it's not intentional deceptive, but it seems like something, you can say that the staff is, you know, the ratios, you know, a staff member for every ten kids. But at the same time, really, that teacher is in the classroom by themselves and there's, you know, maybe one staff member on one-to-one at the same, you know what I mean? It all kind of, yes, it all figures out in one giant, in one giant equation, yes, the staff is one to ten or whatever. But really, in real-life scenarios, that teacher by themselves.
I think it's, I, I'm, I'm happy you're bringing it up because I, I think it's, it's part of the conversation that we have is how do you do justice to all the kids within the system? And it is, I think, across school systems across America. The kids who need extra support get a lot of attention and kids at the top might get a lot of attention, but the kids who are following, you know, doing what they're supposed to do. So I think that's, it's just good to, to hear that and to be reminded of it. But one of the things we're looking at too, that was a proposal for next year and we don't know yet if it will be funded, but is it, and Jennifer can speak more about it. But it's to bring in a math specialist to Green Meadow who would be doing, um, what did you call it? It's push-in, pull-out. So with smaller groups of kids who need extra assistance in math, just like a literacy specialist could work with the smaller groups of kids. They could be doing that too. So those sort of initiatives ideally are reducing the number of kids too within the classroom who are working with the, you know, the regular classroom teacher because there are some kids who are getting these different types of supports. You might want to say more because you know more about it than I do.
So there's a couple pieces. Um, one, I want to talk about sort of average class size and ratios and stuff like that because you can do the math problems and ten to one and all of that. We've talked at multiple meetings in this town about sort of the deceptive numbers that are on the D E S E website. But one of the things that we did, and, and this has happened in every district I've been in when looking at staffing ratios, is to, to once again, go back to the research base and to say, you know, how do we know that what we're doing is not going to impact kids negatively? And the research is pretty consistent that in grades K to three, that's where you want to pay attention to, to average class size. But it's really not until you get down into the fifteens and fourteens where you're going to see a significant increase. And anywhere between sixteen and twenty is where you're, is, is, is going to provide the same level of achievement gains over the course of the three years that they're there. So we did look at that piece and have the conversation around where do we invest our resources? Do we invest more resources in the K to three for a lower class size? And came, came to the decision that having a class size of an average of twenty, which likely will be one or two off in terms of that capacity, would provide us, research base-wise, with, you know, a comfortable place to sit and making the decision that we felt that we weren't putting students in jeopardy. The second piece in talking about the Title One support, so Dr. Gerardi talked about the differentiated instruction work and the use of data that teachers have been using over the last several years that has helped Green Meadow go from a Level Two to a Level One school dis- or school. One of the reasons for that is that they've had significant amounts of literacy support in regards to a literacy specialist and three literacy, um, literacy aides who are able to do some of these interventions and support. So we're really looking to replicate that on the math side, which will do a couple different things. It will allow for, um, the students who are struggling in math to receive some additional support, whether it be from the math specialist as a professional or some additional tutoring from the paraprofessionals who are in there. The other thing that it will do, and I've worked with Terry Morrison on this at Fowler and at Green Meadow, looking at these, is it provides us with some time to help the students who are in the middle to the top and help push them a little bit further too. And see what is it that we need to do to get you over that next step for the students who are in the middle to, to sort of high proficiency range? How do we provide you some extensions? And it provides that specialized attention so that we can begin to look at that data and help, help people move. We're also looking, we're engaged in a scheduling conversation at Green Meadow right now to try and figure out how do we align the schedules in such a way that we might be able to do some flexible groupings and some different things to provide some of those different student-to-teacher ratios that would allow for some of that extension for smaller groups. So even though we have twenty students in one classroom with one teacher, can we pair three teachers together and do an above, you know, I'm, I don't want to use that phrasing, um, an above benchmark grouping, an at-benchmark grouping and a below benchmark grouping that may be of different sizes so that they can get the different support? So we're talking about some of those pieces as well so that it's not just, you know, I'm the teacher, I have all twenty kids and it's all on me to figure out how to do everything. Um, and I think that schools that you will see that have had the most gains, particularly at the elementary and the middle level in regards to the response to intervention and you, data-informed decision-making, it's become sort of a whole-team approach and not an individual-classroom approach. So we're hoping to continue those conversations in that capacity as well. So just to put those pieces up.
I just have a question based on, because you, I mean, I agree, your research is helpful and it kind of steers you potentially in the right direction sometimes, not always.
Sure.
But I wonder if we've gotten feedback on the teachers who are currently living in the situations with the demands and, you know, the real life? And have they given feedback on what they sense, you know, is going to happen or what their needs are? Because they're really the ones that I also look to, to know, you know, is this going to work, especially in our current situation?
So Principal Dankner does solicit their information and Principal Dankner had a, you know, actually that section, the section she wrote. But, you know, sometimes your frame of reference isn't, is your norm, but may not be the norm for the rest of the region or for even the state or the nation. And so, you know, I mentioned that we actually have a very large population of paraprofessionals. When you, one of the things I did when I first got here was I compared, I looked at Maynard and I said, you know, based on our size, we have some limitations and oftentimes we're compared to these larger communities with giant schools. That's not a fair comparison, right? So I sought out the five or so districts that were similar-sized, similar demographics. So towns that had a school district with about fifteen hundred kids, fourteen fifty is somewhere, we were usually somewhere around fourteen fifty. And then the towns that had similar socioeconomic status, similar demographics. So in other words, you know, the same number of ELL student, or similar numbers of ELL students. So that I could draw comparisons. And so when I look at the comparison districts, uh, one of the districts that actually is almost our mirror image is Milis. Milis is a very small district. They're just the same size of us. Their, their elementary school is the exact same size as ours. They have significantly less students with special needs that, you know, we have about sixteen percent, they have about six percent. They have significantly less, um, paraprofessionals than we do. And, you know, one of the things they do though, and that we're, we, we went to visit them, we looked at, is they actually do invite parents and have parent support too. So we've talked to Principal Dankner about seeing how we could talk with the teachers about inviting parents who might want to come in and help in the classroom and those sort of things. But when you look at staffing at other districts that are similar to us, we have more staffing than most other school systems that are our size.
In Green Meadow?
In Green Meadow. So, and the town has been generous to us. I mean, I just talked about how they really have been generous and, but then when they're generous and they give you all this technology, you're still going to hire somebody to run the techno- you know, like, it's almost like it feeds on, you know, we're going to, we build a beautiful high school, but now we have to pay to heat it. We didn't, you know, we have to pay, uh, for all the computers in it that we didn't have to when we had an older high school. So it, it kind of feeds on itself, but the town is very generous with their funding. And really, our staffing is high when you look at comparison-sized districts. And not, not inappropriately high because we're getting good results. I mean, the good news is we're serving children, we're serving them really well. But I think sometimes if people don't take a look at what's around them and what, you know, what other people are doing and have to do, they don't realize how lucky we really are.
I agree with you. Someone said, and I guess I get concerned, you know, the conversation last year was, you know, or the proposal last year, which ultimately did happen, I know for, for Green Meadow was to cut up a first-grade teacher.
Right.
And, you know, maybe I should have, as a parent, seen kind of the writing on the wall that I would have believed that potentially could have happened as you're suggesting this year, that you have a second, that a second-grade position will be eliminated. So, you know, as a parent, I look, oh gosh, I hope we're not going into the whole mindset that we need to start eliminating teacher positions. And if we are leaning to that, you know, why? So, and what can that basically affect? It could affect some of the students, it could affect some of the staff retention, it could affect, you know, how competitive we're looked at, especially if our class is, our class sizes do start to increase. Whereas normally, our class sizes have been smaller than other districts around us. So for me, I just, you know, I'm a little nervous about that conversation that's happening to, okay, we're going to cut. So does that mean third, third grade next year is going to be?
It all depends on student enrollments per grade.
You know, you start saying that and I, and I, as a parent, just get nervous.
Yep.
Because I, I don't want to see anybody ever, you know, lose their job. But when I think about my children learning and, you know, their class sizes becoming bigger and what that will mean and stuff, I, I just get.
But I, I guess my point is it's not bigger. It's always been in the low twenties. Yes, um, in the past, there were some classes that would dip to eighteen, nineteen. But we're still lower than most districts at the low twenties. Most districts are at twenty-four, twenty-five.
But I, I mean, I've lived in those other districts, right? So I mean, I, I hear what you're saying and I, I think, yes, I need to be aware of it, but I, I didn't choose to live in those other districts, so.
And I think that, I think this is great. Like, I actually really love that we have people here telling us because a lot of times it's just us and, and the, the few folks that come all the time. So this is really great feedback, as Mary said, for us to hear. I think the key to remember is it's not like we're taking the money and not repurposing it. And we are repurposing it into staff. So if it's technology, there's other things we're going to talk about later in the meeting. There's other positions that will affect the kids. And when you don't get increases in your funding from the town, and the town is generous, I'm not putting this on them at all. And we're not going to get any increases from the state and we actually might get hit from the state. We haven't even talked about that yet. Then we have to look at our needs as a district. And if we have a bubble in a year, um, you know, my kid's class is twenty-five kids. You know, it is what it is. You know, I look at my teacher and I, you know, try to provide support as a parent and I know a lot of parents in our class do. And my class is eighty percent boys. My god. Like, I give, I, I would love, uh, the first grade. My point, my point is, we're gonna, no, no, just, my point is, we're, you know, we're making tough decisions. You know, this is why it's under the budget and not the curriculum update. This is a budgetary decision. We do have the chance to take advantage of a population dip, but we're immediately repurposing into other staff. So we're not cutting staff, we are repurposing. I won't try to sugarcoat it. But we just have, we have needs across the district in each school. So I just, to some degree, you have to have faith that people are doing their due diligence on this side. Just like it's, I want the feedback. So when we're always looking at the budget, we know what the hot buttons with parents are.
But does it have to be a teacher? You know, is there?
In this case, we, that's, I mean, there's a perfect opportunity. It's going to change the class size by one student.
And if you drill down into the document, we're level funded again this year.
Right.
Which is actually a blessing because in the years that I've been on this school committee, we're actually not looking at trying to close deficits in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So yes, we are talking about a teacher, we are talking about a person, a, someone's job. But I want to go back to what Dawn just said and we're taking that savings and rolling it out into something else that will benefit our district. Like, we're, we're, we're taking the piece of the pie and sliding it someplace else. We're not taking the piece of pie and throwing it out the window because it doesn't exist anymore. So that's, that's the blessing in this, like, and I, I want to take a step back and like, sort of dehumanize it for a moment. Like, yes, we're talking about a teacher position, an FTE. We're talking about class size. But we're also talking about the opportunity to take that as an efficiency savings and roll it into something that we can use for better progress for all students going forward. And I don't take this kind of conversation lightly. I'm a teacher. In my district, that could easily be my job. But when I look at the greater good, and that's what this conversation always is, what is the greater good? That's where we find ourselves. This is an opportunity to, to grab onto something at a relatively small cost as far as this position is concerned and push that finance, those finances into something else that we can use for bigger and better things. So it's, it's not, it's not an easy conversation. These are the things that we agonize about for months on end. But I, I do want to look at the greater thing right here. We're not talking about cutting positions that we can't afford to lose at this point. Like, this is a very different budget circumstance than I have found myself in any of the other years that I've been on the board. We're talking about growing things rather than what can we cut. So I, I do want to take a step back and look at it from a bigger perspective, even though we're very locked in on this one particular item.
I have a current, a sixth-grade.
Say again?
A sixth-grade daughter who was in that bubble year that kept me thinking over here. And my son is in third grade, so it must be like ninety-five percent boys. And then people are moving with say that that class has extra energy.
That sounds very familiar.
Sort of that, they already have a reputation for that, which, you know, they are full of energy. So my question is, do you always just look at numbers? Because their class size is now going from nineteen point eight this year in third grade to twenty-four next year in fourth grade. And I think the teachers have a challenge this year with that. They're going to get older, they're going to mature a little bit. But I don't think it's always as easy as it appears to be. And I should say that I appreciate all the work you do. But do you factor those non-tangibles into that? Because I have it.
Well, that, well, that's a good.
The principals live that though. The principals work with the teachers, they do have those conversations. And again, we've been fortunate to be in a district where we provide additional supports for those sorts of scenarios. There are extra supports. We talked about the Title One-like program is an extra support where it's actual teachers, in addition to the classroom teacher who are helping kids. Or it's paraprofessionals who are specially trained on literacy instruction who are helping kids. So we do, the principals do take that into effect and they also factor it into, um, you know, what they do.
I don't know, I mean, education-wise, I don't, we've had great experiences. I think, again, the intangible, but classroom management, yeah, it was pretty hard last year. And I think there was a lot of loss.
And this is the third grade or fourth grade?
Current third.
Yep.
Current third grade.
The current third grade.
Thank you.
There was a lot, a lot of lost learning time last year managing.
So the other thing I'll add though is that because of, that even though fourth grade and fifth grade technically aren't teamed, there are a lot of extra resources at the Fowler. That's just the nature of, when you get, go up to a middle school or a high school, the schedules change in a way so that there are more electives, there are more, there are different things. And so I think Mr. Sinoply has mentioned in the past at other meetings that that number is deceiving. Even though it does say there'll be twenty-four in that class, there won't be twenty-four in that class at any given time. Kids will have other opportunities.
Fourth grade?
Fourth, uh, fourth grade, yeah. They'll be pulled out for resources.
So one of the things.
You've explained this before.
I think you mentioned about the number of specials that the kids can go to.
Specials.
So that.
But also there's pull-out programs that oftentimes kids are pulled out of your classroom. There's band which sometimes gets, pulls out, which we're trying to solve that problem. But sometimes three trombones are missing from a certain class because that's when they, that's the only time they can get their trombone. Special time. And so it's not always exactly that number of students in the classroom.
So are you saying that the second, so let me just ask one question. So before I ask my next question. So for fourth grade, is the. So for fourth grade, is the, the current class number in, in third grade is six? So that's five non-emergent classes and one emergent.
Correct.
So next year, when those children go to Fowler, will it be four non-emergent classes and one Spanish?
Yes.
So there.
There's another area where actually the average class size isn't accurate, because one class is gonna have twenty-five, the other ones are gonna have twenty-three or twenty-four, because it's gonna.
Yeah, and I guess that's a concern, and I, I've been hearing kind of, as PM, P C R, I've been hearing a little bit about this coming up through, through, you know, through our people, kind of figuring out what. So my, my concern, so we were together, our daughter is in this grade, so we were part of the bubble this year. We're also part of the ten percent of the kids in the class decided to go with choice to AMSA last year. And when immersion program started, that was kind of my concern, is that, you know, a lot of the immersion parents, and I believe all of you are immersion parents.
Not Mary. Mary just lives it, though.
Are very, very important, very invested in education, and, and my concern was that, you know, possibly you would get to that option and that you would take that option to choice out. That's one of my concerns, because listening to these, which actually I remember hearing about the second grade last year, and now it's third grade. I think that that's what's gonna happen, is you're gonna get all of the kids that get lost in a class of twenty-five. And I understand that the immersion kids have twenty-five, but I also feel like the immersion kids have different supports and have.
How do you figure?
Can I jump? I, I agree. Well, I will say, what I observed, when I observed at Green Meadow, I think what I, what I noticed just in watching the Spanish immersion class and washing, watching the regular classes, because we debated, do we go for immersion, do we, do we not? And we were leaning towards not, but that day troubled me a little bit, because I think what I observed is I think for parents, it's the same, same set of parents who might advocate for their kids to go to AMSA. There are parents who are advocating, because you have to make that choice, you have to know something about the value of immersion. So I think there, what I observed from watching the kids, and granted, this was just a one moment, but was a more homogeneous group than in the regular classrooms. And it's, the classroom management, and I can't speak to it this year, because I know that the Spanish immersion has tons of boys right now. So it could have been just at that one time, but I can understand what you're getting at, is that does it make, is it, is it taking kids out and putting them in the special group that then makes the larger regular class more difficult?
So, yeah, so it's definitely gonna be, and right now it seems like that they have definitely a challenging grade and, and just there's no, yes, a challenging grade. But then, that's the thing, is so you're gonna put all of these kids that are challenging at nineteen in the class.
Well, I think we're, so, all right, so.
And I don't wanna get down on boys either, I just wanna say that.
So we're not gonna obviously talk about this for hours, although this is excellent, like, I can't tell you enough, I've loved this. So there's a couple of different topics. Now we're going off astray. So there's, you know, are the immersion classes homogeneous? So our class, like, I just wanna say this, and I don't think I can get in trouble for saying this, our class actually has kids with high needs in it.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say, I can say it, that, that it is.
So my, my point is, immersion is who chooses to go into it. AMSA, which I won't go on about, is a completely different situation. Like, they'll take fourteen kids a class, and they send back the kids they can't help, all right, which I have moral problems with, and I can say that, I don't care if I get in trouble. What I'm hearing everyone saying is, we're creeping up towards twenty-five kids a class, we have concerns. And I think those, and I'm not trying to cut off the discussion, but I know we all wanna go home at some point, including you guys. We hear that, and that's gonna help us as we meet at the subcommittee level. So we meet in groups of twos with the, you know, the appropriate administrations. They're open meetings, they're publicized, parents can come to those meetings. We're hearing the message. So I'm, I'm happy to take new comments, but I think that if I'm, if I'm summarizing what I'm hearing, I wanna hear new stuff now. And, and obviously, members can certainly comment, but I wanna hear new stuff, because I hear you.
We hear you. So talking about class sizes, I'm too sure Fowler, but also children in the next couple of years are gonna be cutting off. And talking about the class sizes and seeing the reduction of staff is only the same page as I've learned about how there's ninety-four meetings of the B B S T committee, talking about major referrals and students who are not receiving services, probably straight seven. And so I'm wondering about class size and hearing some parents' concerns and thinking about that standard number of ninety-four meetings of a B B S T committee, and wondering if there's a connection. And I know that we're looking at much on paper, but if we're thinking about what we're trying to reduce or what we're trying to sort of improve upon and how to better differentiate these students, I'm wondering if there's a connection there. And if we are improving class sizes and maybe looking at class sizes, maybe looking at a further connection between B B S T referrals and the class sizes and the grades and just to see if there's a connection there, and if it's something that we can prevent from.
Yeah, I think that's a great point.
Well, it is, except that it kind of actually supports Jennifer's point, which is, if we have that many B B S T meetings, then we have to figure out other supports for the, the students, which is why expanding the Title One literacy program to a Title One math program would be options that teachers would have at B B S T as opposed to having one more staff member but not having all those other supports. So it actually supports what we're doing, which is trying to help provide some of those appropriate supports, like a, a math specialist who actually works one-on-one with some kids who need it, or in small groups, and/or paraprofessionals who are specially trained to work on math with kids within the classroom. So that's what we're trying to do. That's exact, thank you for pointing that out.
I don't need to make it like an either-or, but it's more like as we're looking at connections is.
Well, and what you're speaking to is something we've been talking about since this group got together starting in July, which is, who are we? And how do we provide the education? And what does education look like today? Like, we talk about that almost every meeting. It's sort of the fun, the visioning, and it's how we involve everyone, because I, you know, there's, there's so much around social emotional learning nowadays and getting kids outside and a break, and, you know, do those things help with classroom management as well? So regardless of the kid, where they are on the learning spectrum, you know, are we doing it the way kids can handle nowadays? You know, maybe they need a little bit of a break from the worksheets and the memorization, you know, that goes into sort of everything we're trying to, to sort of incorporate. So I think that's another piece of it, personally.
Can I just add one piece of it? In looking on page thirty-eight, just specifically in regards to that, because we had lots of conversations around class sizes, staffing levels, and what, you know, where do we, where do we sort of go? And one of the things that Principal Dinkler had been advocating for, you know, sort of like the moment I came on board, which has come up in multiple meetings, is the need for additional support for students, whether it be in the form of, of an additional adjustment counselor, guidance counselor. We talked, and this is something that we've talked across buildings about, too. And you see it listed here as a potential sort of administrator who would oversee and evaluate and then also service students. So that was something else that when we started having conversations, that was immediately identified as a need. And as Dr. Girardi mentioned, with the level service budget, while that is, and I've been in a district where literally our job was to cut one point eight million dollars out of a budget, and I can tell you that, you know, those are heart-wrenching conversations in, in a very different way than the ones that we're having here. So being that we're level service, those things are wonderful, but how do we meet the needs of our students? And so the, the numbers of B B S T referrals, the numbers of issues, that was something that came up and, and was one of the recommendations that is on the sort of not funded list, if you will, that we need to figure out, how do we do within our current, within our current salary budgets? You know, so that was another piece in terms of that.
Yeah, on thirty-eight, there's also counselor support, and I think a lot of people would say we'd love to have additional counseling support at Green Meadow. But at what expense? For lower class sizes, because you only have one pot of, of money to draw from. And so that's the difficult decision that we debate about all the time. There's a lot of great things on here.
You know, it would be helpful, I don't know if it would be realistic, but just to kind of see, you know, what the trade-offs are. Like, in a sense, if you're gonna get this, then this is kind of.
But that's what this document is.
I mean, in a, in a kind of a grid.
More like a chart for.
Yeah.
Well, we've done, actually, in the past, we've done tally sheets when things were a little tighter. This year, this is the first year we've actually done a budget proposal with a narrative that really explains to people the tough choices. So this is actually a new, more transparent document than ever. I see Jen shaking her head, she remembers the tally sheets, and we'd have the discussions.
And I think this is great, it's very helpful to have that background information, but just to have a good chart as, as well.
We can talk about that.
Yeah.
It's just a nice.
Yeah, and part of, and part of tonight is, you know, so there's the budget, so we've all been doing subcommittee work with the administration, like I said before. So part of tonight is sort of our, we're getting towards the end and sort of what are we going to start doing? And a lot of it is, what jobs are we gonna post and what sort of, you know, what should we do as, as good employers to give folks notice that we may have layoffs in certain positions? So this is sort of the grid, but in, in sort of a narrative form. So this is, it's more, I don't think of it as a grid as much as a discussion, because I might have been on the budget subcommittee, but I wasn't on curriculum subcommittee or wellness or any of the other things. So, so this is sort of the grid happening now. Like, we're going to be talking about what are the needs, you know, when you read, I'm not saying you should, it, I just think it's a really great document. This forty-two-page document, that's the first time we've ever put it together. It's a real great narrative of the district, and it's each principal speaks, Jill Green speaks, and they give us, you know, their thoughts on what, you know, if money was no object, what would we do next? So I think that's a really great document for any parent to read, just to sort of get an understanding of the school system your kids are going in. And then these meetings, especially during budget season, you start to hear us start to really argue about the tough choices. And why, and then that's one of the reasons I'm happy we have folks here today.
Will you be posting this on the, on the.
This is, yeah, this should already be on, this forty-two-page document should already be on there. If it's not, it's an oversight, it's been around since February, so, and we're happy to share.
It's been at multiple meetings, other meetings, Bingcom and so forth.
So, Ian?
So what we're reading here is, is, you know, on page thirty-eight, is this something that is definitely going to happen if the budget is funded? Or is this your wish list if the budget is?
This is, um.
The wish list.
This is what, yeah, this is Donna's wish list and sort of the current state of Green Meadow and what we would do if we could. So she's gonna, so a principal will come to us and say, this is what we need.
So this is if it's funded, this is.
Nope, this is this.
Yes.
Correct. I just wanna make sure I'm understanding the question.
Well, the first bullet is actually a description of the, the, is actually, it's a description of the personnel concerns. And the first one is the bullet describing moving six down to five teachers. The rest of them are all things that have not been funded because they're additional to the current budget. So there's, there, the next bubble bullets are all wish list stuff, all the way on to page thirty-nine.
Technology's funded.
What's that?
Technology's funded.
Yep, that's true. Yeah, and this is a living document, so, but, you know, before, I think when we had that in, though, we hadn't had the funding yet for the technology.
At that point, no.
Yep. So it's a, definitely a living document, it's meant to be, we're gonna constantly update it. Like, this technology has been funded now.
Well, it hasn't, because that's the hundred and eleven that we haven't.
So we'll talk about that.
Not the specialists, right, right, right. Sorry, I was talking more hardware. Yep.
Yes, so the, the purchases of these pieces is in the tech budget for next year. It's the first year of the four-year plan to sort of completely turn over our inventory.
Right.
So that, that, there is funding for all of the positions that are listed, however, there is no funding for, because it's not within the level service budget.
Oh, I thought, the hardware. I'm, I'm, I'm missing you.
Yeah, I was on the same page.
I was thinking the tech integration specialist, which is still another stat.
Jen?
I just wanted to just make a quick comment, because I have the luxury, if you will. The CPAP has collaboration in Newsweek, with both Superintendent Girardi and Director Special ed Jill Green. And so we have maybe a little bit more insight into the difference between. And so when you're talking about large class sizes, that is a concern, because if you can't get the class in the place to learn, they don't work. And that starts with management. But one thing that I think, and, and communication is one of the things that we are constantly talking about, how to get this information out to everyone. But there is like a long-term plan of how they wanna go about doing some of these things. And one of them, I don't know if you want, just wanna talk very briefly about positive behavioral intervention supports. Because that's a, a, a teacher who gets professional development and learns about these different ways to manage their class. My son has a fantastic, actually, I'll give him my kids, I'd say, fourth grade teacher, fifth grade, but she has, her whole class is built around positive behavioral intervention supports. I don't know whether her, that classroom is considered a busier classroom or not, but all three of my kids are very successful in there because all of those supports were built in around how she structured her classroom. And for some teachers, that's a new thing, and so they need professional development.
So the strategic plan that we've been talking about has the first tier of supporting all students, and one of the elements of that tier is, is P B I S, Positive Behavior Intervention Supports, which is a specific organization, a specific company that Massachusetts has actually sort of adopted and has been very successful. But essentially, the concept is, is that there's common expectations for student behavior, for, for sort of community behavior, it's not just about students. But for student behaviors, and there's common language around sort of expected choices and, or expected behaviors and unexpected behaviors, and common language around why we want to see the behaviors that we do. And districts that have, and schools that have implemented P B I S or some other sort of common expectation for these kind of behavioral challenges have found a great deal of success. Because what it does is it essentially sets the bar in the same way that you have the academic structure, where eighty to, eighty to eighty-five percent of your students are going to meet your expectations, and it provides some very specific strategies for dealing with sort of that yellow zone, they call them, the ten to twelve percent of students who are not going to meet expectations, but can with some specific supports, and that's part of what the training involves. And then you have what they call the red zone students who need some real specific help and supports in, in talking about some things in some different ways. So that's something that we're looking at, is how do we sort of set those expectations? Green Meadow right now uses responsive classroom as part of their morning meeting and as part of their cultural norms within the classroom spaces, which essentially is the same kind of thing. What P B I S adds on top of that is it adds the data collection piece and adds the intervention piece in a different way so that we're able to, again, use some of this data to inform our decision-making and help to move some different conversations. And district, again, schools and districts who have implemented P B I S specifically have, have found a great deal of success. And one of the things that we are paying attention to very much within that first pillar are the, I'm not good at doing things in a short fashion, so I apologize for speaking briefly. But the, the P B I S sort of goes into the social emotional piece, where we want to create these cultures within, within our schools that students not only understand expectations, but believe that those expectations are, are there for a purpose in helping them to get better at things. And that's a whole community conversation around, you know, making sure that all of our kiddos feel like they're learners and they belong in this community and how we do those components. It's not just for the, the active kids or the kids who can't sit still or any of these pieces. It's really about how do we all support one another so that we can be ready for those academic experiences? And so that's something that we're act, we're very actively looking at to support the work that teachers have already been doing.
Is there a thought to replace responsive classroom with P B I S, or is this an additional?
Yeah, it doesn't replace. They really go hand in hand. So responsive classroom has set common expectations. P B I S will use that same language, but we'll centralize it. And it takes the classroom expectation and puts it into public spaces as well. So you have the respect, what are the core values? Respect, responsibility, no, respect, ready to learn. Safe.
You mean, Green Meadow motto or the?
No, the Green Meadow one.
Kind, safe learners.
Kind, safe learners.
Kind, safe learners, sorry, thank you.
I feel like I just lost a game show.
I see the kids hearing the announcements and they do this, and, and I couldn't remember. Anyhow, it takes that sort of, what does it mean to be kind, and put it into public spaces. And there's a lot of work to talking with bus drivers, recess and lunch monitors, all of the pieces. So we're all using the same language in all of these spaces. So there's not a shifting of expectations from the playground at recess to the classroom space in terms of those. And that, that is the, the element that's really successful, is that common expectation across all of the different platforms kids are engaged in during the day.
And you find it successful? How long has it been?
We have not invested in it. We, there's something we are looking to put in place. And whether it's, again, P B I S is a specific organization. Massachusetts has adopted it as part of their multi-tiered systems of support, so they've endorsed it, the, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. I was in a district previously that put it in for the middle school and two elementary schools and found some immediate changes in terms of those, you know, the green level students, right, the common expectations, the way kids were talking to each other. And I can get some, I don't have it tonight, but I can get some additional statistics on changes that districts have seen when they put it in place. It's something that's been generally touted as incredibly successful when it's done with fidelity and sort of owned by the entire community.
And I worked in another state that was doing this long before Massachusetts was, using that particular P B B I S, P B I S, and had the same kind of results in our school system, so.
Sorry, Renee, I didn't see you back there.
I just think that until you can get kids in a good place socially and emotionally, the math and everything, you have to be in a good place before all of that can come to kid, can talk to kids effectively. And I would love to see, like, what you're describing, I think my son's future this year must be trained in that as well, because I just see his emotional growth and then academics just flew with it.
Yes.
And it's really amazing. And it's really amazing, so if you can fast track that, he's.
Well, we have amazing teachers, we really do have amazing staff, they're doing incredible work every day. And it's nice to hear, you know, many of you talking about all those successes, so thank you.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I think something, I mean, I know the research with responsive classroom. If it's not consistent, teachers aren't consistently retrained, and I mean, I don't know, the new teachers, it's so expensive. Are they being trained every summer, or principals going?
Yes.
I'm just saying, if that's not kept up, it's not, that could, I mean, it could be.
We made a commitment to responsive classroom, and I believe every new teacher was trained, or I am, I don't want to say that. We've made a commitment to responsive classroom and have had trainings over the last several summers. I'd have to go check and make sure if every single teacher has been trained, but we also.
I mean, I was trained at two second grades years ago, and I know that was desperate, keep up with training. If, you know, if it's, you know, and if it doesn't, you know, keep up with it, it does, it becomes kind of circus, and it's.
Yep.
I want to say it was two years ago where we came to that realization, because one of the, this is kind of a tough statistic, but I actually asked Colleen to look it up for me, and I was shocked that we actually have a lot of teacher turnover, staff turnover every year, teachers and administrators. And, you know, I talked about similar-sized districts with similar challenges, but we are surrounded, or really, really close to Boston and north of us, where the salaries are significantly higher. And so every year, we do lose a significant number of staff, which is a shame. So we have an obligation to retrain the new ones that come in, and we realized that about two years ago. And that's why there's been a real push, especially with responsive classroom, to make sure the new folks get that training.
I, I just want to make one note and just, just say that I think that we're talking about boys and people who, that active people and that a lot of the things that we talk about, and we talk about in curriculum subcommittee, is what can we do to really engage kids and to help them learn in different ways? So that they are able to then feel like they're a, a part of the learning in, in a, in a, in a more dynamic way. And I think that that's part of it too, and, and how do we do that? Because boys learn differently, and it's, that's part of the reason, and, and it's, it's a national problem. It is not just in Maynard, where, and so I think that we're caught a little bit in this system, where we're, there's these expectations of, of, of ways to teach and what teachers have to do. And trying to, at the same time, then manage the classroom, and, and it's not, it's a misfit for what some of the students need. And so a lot of what we're trying to do, and the nature-based, and I, I know it's, it's gotta be hard to get kids outside, we talk about that a lot too. But that's one place to start, where it's engaging kids in a different way, and it's about inquiry, and it's about exploration. And it's pulling on kids that may not be able to just sit and focus, which has to happen too. And, and it's the social emotional piece, and that's part of why we're focusing on the playground and creating the, uh, play space that can engage kids in different ways and getting them out, because there's so much research, and I'm sure many of you know of it, that says that they, that boys especially need that break. And they need to engage their equilibrium system to then be able to sit and, and, and pay attention. And in fact, there's a direct connection between their nervous system development and their ability to sit. So like, all those things just come into play as we're, and we're having those conversations too. And I hope that we can continue to have these kind of conversations, because this is the reality of what teachers are dealing with. And we're trying to then translate that and, and work with everyone in the community to find ways on different levels to address that. And, and so it's great that it comes up, and we thank you for being here.
So if there's nothing else, we're gonna switch gears to the curriculum, which is sort of the other half of what drives the budget. So you're all welcome to stay, I, I hope you do, it's, uh, it's certainly another big piece of the puzzle, so.
So I'll just summarize first, if we want to add anything. But the curriculum subcommittee has been really discussing several curricular decisions that could be affecting scheduling and hiring and things. So, you know, there are three major areas of concern, and it's been over a couple of years. And I think we're getting closer to some ideas on how to solve those problems. One is on the foreign language program, there's a lot, been a lot of debate on what it should be and how it should be structured. One is on the PE and health program, which didn't survive some cuts years ago. And the other one is the math Title I-like program, which we've kind of talked a lot about. Jennifer had an opportunity to talk about that, but, uh, so I just want to address them briefly. You know, in foreign language, we just instituted a Latin program that's been really successful. But our problem in being a small school district is we also really want to support French and Spanish. The curriculum committee, even before this curriculum committee, really wanted us to support French and Spanish as early as possible at language acquisition. And so we're still trying to figure out how does Latin fit in with French and Spanish? And what staffing needs we're gonna have to look at. So the next agenda item, I'm gonna talk about postings and posting just to see what's out there. You know, if we were to have a point-five French, point-five Spanish teacher who is dual-certified. And so we're gonna talk about that later, but that's one of the ideas that we're floating out there that we might consider. PE, we talked about that there's not enough, and so we're looking at how to shift resources. But we really know that the high school, I think it was five years ago, it was the year before I got here, lost a, I think it was a one-point-oh FTE. And so we're really trying to figure out how we're gonna, again, work with this budget, but figure out how to shift some resources possibly to the high school, because we feel that there's a need there. And then the other one was the Title I math interventions, and I think Jennifer really talked pretty well about it, about the fact that, like, we have a literacy specialist and literacy paraprofessionals like Green Meadow, who do a lot of one-on-one or small group instruction. We'd like to do the same with math, and we'd also like to extend it into Fowler a little bit. So in the past, the Green Meadow had a lot more services, Fowler didn't have those services. We'd kind of like to see more of a K through five support service, and I don't know if you want to speak more to that, Jennifer? But I, I, I think I just articulated what we're thinking about, how, how we put it together, or if we have the funds to put it together, we're still waiting to see.
So the Title I support would be a Title I program of both math and literacy. And we would be looking for school day support, grades K to five, which is pretty typical for districts, is that for their Title I funds, is their limited funds, the entitlement grant that we get from the state every year, which requires us to do some specific things in regards to programming. Most schools tend to have the supports for the early learners somewhere between K and five, K and six. And so what we would like to do is to keep the program that we have at Green Meadow in literacy. Again, add the additional pieces for math, but then expand the school day supports during the day to grades K through five. And so making Fowler a Title I school, which will allow us to do a couple of different pieces. It'll allow us to use some of those grant funds at Fowler in either staffing positions or in supply position, supply resources, which we have not been able to do before. So providing intervention or extension materials for teachers, again, providing some staffing for both of the, those buildings. The other thing that we would like to do is to provide before or after school, depending on the district, in the very successful math lab that had wonderful support from the Maynard Education Foundation last year, where we did some after-school work. Terry Morrison, our math coach, led a math lab where the teachers received professional development and data-informed instruction, in addition to providing some intervention for students. We've not only continued that this year for Green Meadow, but we've expanded it to goals literacy and math at Green Meadow and Fowler, and have received some really wonderful feedback for that. So again, making Fowler a Title I school will allow us to increase that specifically.
Can I discuss, for the funding for the Title I, scanning that, would that add funding to it? To, to add in the grades four through five, is what you're saying?
So essentially, what we would be able to do, what I've gone through, we received a significant increase in our Title I funds due to the re, um, recalculation that the state did this year of how they allocate those funds to districts. So we received about ninety thousand additional dollars, or somewhere between one fifty-five, one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. What, and, and that was sort of like, you know, welcome on board in August, how do we spend this money? So instead of putting staffing positions in place, we really took the year to sort of do a needs survey and needs inventory. And we think what we can do is we can fund through keeping the supports that are in place currently. I believe that we'll be able to fund three paraprofessional positions, which equates to about sixty thousand dollars, somewhere between fifty-five and sixty thousand dollars. And those positions would be used at both Green Meadow and at Fowler. We would not have the funding for the math specialist within the Title I budget because of some needs that we would have in terms of that piece. So if we were to do the math specialist position, again, that's the other unfunded piece, where we have to figure out if that's the priority and where that comes from. Just to give you a sense of why, you know, because we could fund the math specialist, right? It's about sixty-six thousand is what we average for an FTE when we put that in the budget. But in the Title I allocation, you need to calculate and, and put money aside for the retirement system if you hire professional staff. So you wind up spending an, an additional eleven percent just on the retirement portion. Whereas if we spend it on paraprofessional staff, we can spend all of that money within the salaries rather than putting that aside. So it saves us about eleven percent of those salary figures, which would be why we do it that way.
And it basically would give you the same thing, right?
Yeah. It's, right, it's one person versus three, but one professional versus three, or three paraprofessionals. You have a question?
I was wondering about the research, having a math coach versus three professionals. I'm pretty sure that, that a coach is much more effective than a teacher.
So Terry Morrison, and I can have her come and speak specifically, because I asked that same question. The district I was in previously, we had one literacy specialist for every grade level, which, you know, so, that's a lot different than what we have here, right? So I asked that question specifically about is this the direction we want to go in regards to continuing the specialist and then the paraprofessionals for support? And she looked at some research out of Kentucky, I believe, that had done a lot of work on, on which to do. And I can't speak specifically to the research, which, which she indicated was that the structure that we were using, if we were to do the specialist and the paraprofessionals would, would achieve the gains that we were looking for. And again, I can't speak to the specifics of that piece of it, but she assured me that the research was there on that. The question then comes, if it's one or the other, then what do we do? And I posed that to her, to Terry specifically, and I said, you know, if you can get another U or you can get three paraprofessionals, which would you want? And again, she cited that, that model and felt that the three paraprofessionals would allow her to train them and then spread out further.
And do you feel like, just in terms of hiring, I know that district I work in, they cannot find TAs to hire?
Yeah.
At all, that are qualified. So do you feel like there's enough school applicants out there? Because I work in a pretty wealthy district that is close to Austin, and you can't find people to fill those positions.
Asked that question too, worried about turnover, you know, right? Because especially people who are getting this kind of training and expertise, they're gonna leave for full-time jobs. And both Principal Dagnar and Terry Morrison and Megan.
Rimmer.
Rimmer, thank you, have, have indicated that we've been super fortunate, that we've had really highly qualified people that have come. They, we've had turnover, but we've been able to hire. There's also additional requirements in regards to Title I paraprofessionals, in regards to certification, well, not certifications, but coursework or degrees that they need to have in order to be paid out of Title I. So again, that was a concern. So we're asking those questions, the, the, the people on the ground are assuring me that this is the direction that makes some sense. But again, if it's, so if it's both, if it's the specialist and the three, we feel like we're in a really good place because we've modeled that through literacy. If it's one or the other, I think we're gonna have that conversation again and just make sure that that's the direction we want to go.
And your concerns are all accurate. We actually have, because we've been doing a Title I literacy program for so long, we've had, you know, literacy paraprofessionals who then went on to get certified to become teachers, so. But that's not a bad thing, we should be, you know, they're, they're our colleagues, we want them to grow. But in the meantime, they're taking their job serious and giving us really good work, so.
I'd actually rather paraprofessionals who try and get their own jobs, because that means it's, it's not a parent who's just looking for school hours.
Yeah.
As a fellow.
Yeah.
I'd like it to be someone who wants to be a teacher.
Yeah. So we've had luck with that, though. But it is, it's a legitimate concern too, because it does happen.
Does, does all the data from the state support the model? Because I've been seeing some PPI data that's showing a decrease in some scores.
And PPI would be? In literacy specifically?
Well, for the all, for Green Meadow, for the all-students group and the hanging group, the last four years of data for ELA seem to be decreasing from what I've just been looking at there. Because I'm, I'm curious about how the curriculum impacts the budget. You know, we've said things like, SPOF's are going up, the law isn't saying staffing's going down, PPI's going down. And just looking at a few things here, we have nine percent increase in class size because of that. And some of the, the PPI data, which is the, based on the composite performance index, the, you know, it's a little, it's not pleasant from what I'm seeing right now, so. Because I know that for, you know, bringing up that level one this year, primarily due to the whole harmless exception, because they, they had a big drop in that score, so.
Um, I don't believe that's true, were they level one last year? I believe they moved from a level two to a level one, is that?
Yeah, they were level two last year and they're level one this year.
So the hold harmless doesn't apply to increases. You're held harmless unless you.
I'm not.
Move up. I'm just, I'm pulling up the, the document you're looking at, Mark. Um, so yes, we did look at that, Terry and I had some conversations around that in terms of the growth and the expectations that students are gonna need to meet. So we're gonna pay very close attention to the scores this year and see what is happening in talking with Megan and Principal Dagnar in terms of what they're seeing and the scores that they're looking at with both the, with the DRA, the DIBELS, the STAR assessment to a lesser degree. The data that they're showing is that the interventions that we're providing for students are working, for the students that we're providing them for. The PPI is obviously, of course, across the board, and so what we need to do is pay attention to the scores that we get this year, see if it continues to be that downward trend, and then we really need to identify who are those students who we're not supporting and what, what are, what do we need to do differently for them? But again, so the, the, the state data is one sort of piece, looking broadly at the entire group. The data that we're looking at internally is showing some success with the interventions that we're providing specifically, which is why we feel justified in advocating the continuation of that program. The work that Terry has done specifically with the math program at Green Meadow and the work that she's put in place, centralizing around the goal math curriculum, the use of Reflex Math in terms of fact fluency, the, this year, the use of Symphony Math that she's putting in place, I think had a lot to do with the change in the way that we're perceiving and talking, and kids are, are learning math, which obviously increases the scores. I think that, I think that having additional supports with her will help, help that go exponentially higher, which would be why we would recommend using a similar model to what we're using in, in ELA, in literacy. That's the wrong thing.
Okay, so in terms of the report from the subcommittee, you ended with Title I math intervention. Do you have more to say, or is it time for members' questions? Or, I mean, I know how to run the meeting, but are you done with your presentation?
Um, I'm, yeah, we, yeah, I, I did my piece, that was the quick summary.
Yeah, I can never tell if you're done.
But the next, no, I'm done. The next item, though, is postings.
No, I know, but, so I just want to just try to run the meeting, actually. But are there questions from the members? Not, sorry, that came out wrong. Are there questions for the curriculum committee? So I have a question, for example. So what, if we take Latin from a, an actual class in sixth grade and make it a specialist position in grades four through seven, since I'm still learning, what does that mean? Like, kids would choose between ceramics, band, and Latin?
Yeah, we're just exploring that, we're actually gonna, as a curriculum committee, we're gonna meet with the Latin teacher and the Spanish teacher to flush it out a little bit more.
I mean, what, what we were thinking, so it would be a special, so all the kids would take Latin, grades four through seven.
Oh, okay.
It would be a special.
So a special isn't optional, it's just a different name for a class.
And then what would happen is, because up to this point, there's been an advantage for, for Spanish, and that kids could take Spanish a year earlier, right, than French? So this would make the playing field more level between those two. So all kids take Latin, and then they have a choice between French and Spanish for the same, for eighth grade, we were thinking. So they're also exposed to Latin, there's a lot of benefits to Latin and possibilities for what Latin can offer. But then, thinking about being able to try to create parity with French and Spanish and starting it earlier. So that was just, we were trying to come up with a creative way to continue to, to allow some Latin to be a part of the picture. And, and there's been some neat things happening with Latin. So that was, that was, those are the considerations to this point, but it's certainly not set.
Well, that's great to hear, because I know that when we did roll out Latin, you know, the, the feedback from the parents was tremendous. So I just wanted to sort of understand, was it going to be offered less, or, you know? Sounds like more kids, but just a little less often per week, or not even?
It, yes, it would be less often per week, depending on keeping, if we keep the current. Yes, it would be less often per week, depending on keeping, if we keep the current Fowler schedule, it would be either one or two times per week, which over the four years would be a bit less than a year worth of Latin instruction. I think it's important to note that if we are making this change, it is a significant difference to having a Latin program where students are going every day.
Sure.
As part of their academic core. The expectations would be very different in terms of the curriculum, and that's part of why Ms. Viall is coming to speak with the curriculum subcommittee, to be able to explain some of her thinking about this, this potential shift. So it, it would change. It would be different than it is currently.
But the struggle has been, for years, on curriculum committees, not just this year's curriculum committee. We, when I got here, we were down to, I think we actually, my first year, did not have a French program, where we had one last class. And parents were saying, how could you let French go? And so we were fortunate enough to get a dynamic teacher, kids got excited, he's built the program, and now we have a full-fledged program. And the question is, we all know that the longer you try to do language acquisition, the stronger it's going to be at the end. Do we start moving it down to seventh grade, sixth grade? And so, you know, I don't want to go back to the days where we let French slip either, and yet I love what we're doing with Latin, so this is a real struggle for the curriculum committee. And we're still working it through and having conversations, so we'll see where it goes.
Okay.
Can I just add one question?
Oh, of course, yeah.
About if, if for some reason it became a special, how would that, I don't, how does that work in the schedule of the school day? What would it replace something?
Um, so we're, that's what we're working with Principal Mila and, and Assistant Principal Fleming on, what that would look like in terms of that piece. Can we move some things around? Can we do some different pieces? What does it mean to add an additional elective to that rotation? But it would fit within that elective block.
The other problem we had at the end of last year was that we have a lot of small music instrumental classes that sometimes get pulled out of those classes. I talked about it earlier. And so by adding another specialist, it might give the music program an opportunity to, to function better and not impinge on some of the other specialist programs. So that, there's a lot to look at the schedule of Fowler, because there's been, there was a lot of concerns at the end of last year, that kids, you know, three piccolos were being pulled out of math class.
Well, Zach was, Zach was huge in second and math.
Right.
Well, that's, man, that's.
Right, and we don't want that to happen, so this, adding this might actually help that out. We're trying to figure it out, but we're, we're going one school at a time. The high school schedule's our priority right now, then Fowler, then Green Meadow. And so it, that has an impact on each one, but we're in the process of figuring that out, and that's why we're thinking about it.
And that's sort of my question. Like, it's great to add these new opportunities, but are kids going to actually be able to take advantage of them, or are they going to be so enamored with the clarinet that they won't take Latin? Like, I just want to make sure that we're not giving kids no choice in reality.
So what, the, Chris Fleming and I have worked very hard looking at the schedule. We had put a, Chris put a scheduling, or Principal, this is whatever his title is, Mr. Fleming, put a scheduling committee together, and we've looked at it. And one of the pieces, he, he came to me at the beginning and said, what's the priority? And, and having heard the concerns, and it's not just in Maynard, it's everywhere where you have band and instrumentals during the day. My priority was that we are not asking kids and/or teachers to make false choices about, you know, well, go to this or that, and it's okay if you don't go. And, and that's just, to me, is not fair to the teacher or to the student. And so what it would be is that it may be that the students who are in instrumentals or are selecting instrumentals will be missing something in terms of the elective rotation, and that would be a choice that they would need to make. What I have said to him is they cannot miss PE, and they cannot miss health. We could have conversations about other things they cannot miss. But unfortunately, in order to put the instrumentals into places when not all students are doing them, we need to, we, we need something to go opposite of it, where the students are doing that. And so then, that's where the elective pieces come. And I felt that it was better to say to students and to families sort of upfront, you know, here's your clear choice. These are the electives that, that you can sort of select, and if you're selecting to have the instrumentals, this is the one you're missing, rather than saying, oh, we're going to put you in all of them, and you can kind of pick when you go to what, and then it's the teacher who's being mean by keeping the kid there, or the kid who's being pulled in two different directions, so the sort of best of a bad choice.
It's a struggle. Scheduling's not easy.
I feel like, and I understand, but I, I feel like being in sixth grade this year, I wasn't sure of the Latin program when we started it, at the beginning of the year. My daughter has loved it. We actually, we just came out of a horoscope thing this weekend, and we were at the sixth grade troop in a cabinet with second, the second grade, basically a majority of second grade immersion. And they, during one of the break-off sessions, the creators of that was in the pledge of allegiance to Spanish, which then set our girls off to do the Macarena Latin where we can.
That's awesome.
Isn't that awesome?
That's fantastic.
And I think it's fantastic, and I think that, you know, I hate to lose now, I would hate to lose that. I feel like I'm kind of set.
Yep.
It's, it's nice in sixth grade there, but I.
So we're giving a lot of thought to it, nothing's definite yet, but.
We've heard good things about that particular class and the teacher, so.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, we're hearing nothing but good things for, about that class.
Yeah.
So in looks, in looking towards the two subcommittee updates, in terms of any votes you need from this, the school committee tonight, do we have to officially vote to give Colleen the approval to begin the bus registration process, or just a nod and a "hey"?
I, I think it's just a consensus of the school committee. We talked about that, and then we got sidetracked on the staffing issue.
Gotcha.
But I think the budget subcommittee recommended to the full school committee that we keep the fees the same for this year for all activity fees and busing, and I think just a, an inform, I don't know, not an inform, but just, Colleen would like to be sure that she's, you know, following your wishes, that she starts the bus.
Does anyone have any issue if we start the bus registration process?
No, let's get that going.
And not add fees.
May ninth, get in line.
Apparently, you're going to break, you're going to, someone's going to tweet that out, and you're going to break the internet. One, one note, Colleen, it just came to me. So in case I forget to send an email, between now and next year, I'd really like to see some comparisons on athletic and activity fees, because I think raising fees, so we've raised them twice in thirteen years, and I think that's wonderful, but just, should we have to look at it harder next year in a bad budget year if we were to have them? I'd love to have just like the Milis and the, and also the Lincoln Sudbury, just, I mean, it's good to compare apples and oranges sometimes, just to get some. So just between now and then, they give you plenty of time. I'd love to get a little more data for next year. But I'm glad we don't have to suggest raising them this year.
We can do that.
We have all of that.
I figure. You guys are awesome. So if there's nothing else, then we'll move to tentative job postings. Jen, did you have anything?
I just have a question.
I thought that was a diss poll.
Will you guys, we do discuss any in, in this forum, some of the scheduling issues that we're going to be dealing with for the high school, what choices will be made?
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
Just, can I give an update on that?
Sure.
Because I don't want people to feel like, you know, we've had all this conversation, and all of a sudden we go behind the scenes. So essentially, what's happened, our guidance staff did an amazing job and got student recommendations and teacher recommendations all cleaned up and ready to go. So that is now in our hands, where we are looking at requests for classes, looking at contractual compliance in regards to numbers of preps, and putting that forward. I'm meeting with Principal Caro Janus tomorrow in hopes of solidifying at least one draft of the schedule to be able to run that. We had promised the staff that we would run three different versions of the schedule to show them what those look like, and so once we have that and, and bring that to them, you know, we'll bring it back here in terms of, of making those specific choices. Right now, in turn, we had talked about small class sizes and, and things that are, you know, if we have seven students, which we do in, it's either calculus or AP calculus, I can't remember, what do we do with that? Right now, Principal Caro Janus is talking with the department heads of each of those departments where those situations are there, and getting their recommendation on, is there a way to combine? Is there a way to do something different? You know, what do we do to make sure that we're not jeopardizing kids' transcripts, but we're being sort of thoughtful in regards to the classes? So those conversations right now are happening at the building level. Once those happen, we'll bring some pieces back here.
And the reason that I, I kind of thought about is this attention to the Latin program. My priorities just happen to be different. And I have a daughter who loves Spanish. We have two languages, and I would really hate to see adding a third language at the expense of another program like art.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. No, I thought you had great, you had great examples at the last meeting about that as well, so, yeah, no, that's, I don't feel there's any.
As you can tell, I'm an artist.
You know, Maynard's the kind of town that I just think there's so much support for art, and I don't say that facetiously or on a soapbox, like, I just, we want art, you know, and especially in Maynard. It's a great outlet for kids, and a lot of kids really excel in it, so.
And Mr. Flynn has spoken with Principal Caro Janus about how we make sure we, we continue the program and keep its vitality and move that forward. So those are definitely ongoing conversations, and I, I promise you, we will not be sacrificing art for Latin. At least one here. Fire me if you want. No.
Yeah, no, we were speaking in, at high school. So it was my understanding that Latin was going to be the segue to the choices at high school.
Yes, not, not expanding.
And that in high school.
Yeah.
I think it can only go so far in Latin, and then you kind of.
There's only so much you can do with a dead language.
That's, that's what we've been talking about.
That's the struggle.
Yeah.
So it was my understanding that Latin was, in sixth grade, going to be the segue to them choosing another foreign language in high school.
Yeah, Latin's a great introductor, introduction, I think, to just sort of the idea of speaking another language if you've never had any exposure to it with your family or other things, and so, yeah.
Well, you're all welcome to the curriculum subcommittee meetings, too, which we discussed that. Help us figure it out.
We're still doodling to find out when everybody's available.
We're trying to schedule the next curriculum subcommittee meeting. We have some scheduling conflicts.
Where are those texted meetings posted? Are they on the school committee page?
Yeah, they're on the town, they're on the town.
Okay, they're on the what?
Town website.
The Maynard Public School website or the town?
Town.
Usually both, usually both. If you don't see something, let us know, but usually both.
Yeah, Colleen.
They go up on the bulletin board, too, in town hall.
If that's a place you go.
I, I was down there pulling my nomination papers, and I was like, oh, hey, we have this public posting board, all right.
I mean, I'm down there, too, I hear you.
Mr. Tomel looks at that all the time.
What?
Mr. Tomel. I just remember him from our finance committee meetings.
That's right.
Very much appreciates the public posting board. He's a wonderful soul.
So I think the next logical piece is tentative job postings?
So there's a theory that all the best candidates get hired in early April and May, and hiring after that results in choices from a weak leftover pool of candidates. And while I'm always open to being wrong, or admitting if I'm wrong, I do not really agree with that theory, that the pool of cand, I do agree that the pool of candidates is larger in the early months of hiring, but I've been hiring teachers for seventeen years, and the reason why the pool is larger is because a lot of people are graduating, getting certified at that time, and so, yes, there's a large pool. But, you know, some of the best hires I've hired, you know, we've been, the school committee has been pretty good to us in saying, we want you to hire the best candidate. Doesn't have to be the cheapest, doesn't have to be the person right out of college. And so I've found that I've been able to hire midlife career changers, people with lots of experience, and those people tend not to be in that large pool, that's when they decide to make a decision, you know what? It's time for me to go and grow, or go to a different school district or whatever. However, since that theory is out there, you know, and the other reason why I also is I'm always nervous about posting jobs before the budget is actually passed. So even since many folks in our leadership team and in the community subscribe to the theory that we should hire as soon as possible, I've always acquiesced each year that we would submit anticipated postings for difficult positions to fill as early as possible. And this year, some of those postings are going to be, we have two team, potential team chair vacancies in secondary and elementary school. We have an ELL retirement, so we're going to have an ELL position we're going to need to fill. We have the grade four Spanish immersion, which is a new, you know, we've been adding Spanish immersion as we go. There's been the consideration of seeing what's out there as far as dual-certified French and Spanish teacher. There's been the adjustment counselor that we had a retirement in, and then there's, we've had some other positions that we have to fill, like the grade seven math, grade seven science, and the high school science. So what I'm saying is I'm acquiescing to posting these early and sharing that with the school committee, because a lot of people on the school committee and the community and my, my leadership team all feel, subscribe to that theory, so why not? And I'm just sharing that with you and letting you know that we're going to do some of those postings as early as possible. So hopefully that'll make everybody feel good.
Are the first two positions special education positions?
They are.
Okay.
They're actually administrative positions that we've had, and, you know, we've had it for quite a while, so, but there's a need.
Questions for Bob?
So what happens if, if, say, the tentative doesn't move? Do you just say, any, any resumes you get in, you just say?
Well, it gives the principals a chance to look at a larger pool of candidates and then start interviewing as quickly as possible, and then once we do know the budget numbers or things are solid, then anticipated becomes, oh, that opening's great, we want you.
And if it's in a retirement, you know that money's already there, which is nice.
Exactly. Some, many of those things are retirements or resignations, and so therefore, they're already in the budget, so we might as well post them as early as possible. Except if you had a situation where the governor cuts all our money and we have to reduce seventeen people.
Why would you say that? Why would you do that?
No, I know, but that does happen. You know, luckily, we haven't had those Chapter Nine C cuts and those sort of things happen to us, but during, you know, I remember the years when we did have those sort of situations. I know Jennifer mentioned it in one district, having to reduce seventeen teachers in one year, that, that would be hurtful. So I'm always worried about that. That's my job to worry.
Now, so if I could ask a clarifying question. So just looking at one of the positions we, that was listed above, the Title I math, and I don't want to get into what that means, but that's not listed as a tentative job posting? Is that because we're that concerned about the budget, or is it just that we're still thinking about it?
It's not funded yet.
Okay.
We're looking at scheduling to figure out, you know, if we can afford some of these things that are on the principal's wish list.
Right.
So that is obviously, you know, something.
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out, like, where you are in the process, because that's curriculum.
The paraprofessionals are, are funded from the grant, right? From Title I?
If we choose to do that, we'd fund it through the grant, and that would be a later hire.
Yeah.
The point five, Spanish, point five, French, I think you mentioned this, but the purpose of doing that is to see what candidates are out there. And then again, we're continuing that conversation with the curriculum subcommittee.
Yeah, since one of our questions was, are there a lot of candidates out there?
Yeah, of course.
Who are dual-certified.
To even have, to make that a sustainable option. Right. We talked about that with tech ed versus computer science, like, are people actually, and that's what we thought of, that there were actually a ton of pool in tech ed anymore, and it wasn't a graduating major anymore, and things like that, so. Focus on questions on this one?
I just have a question about the second grade position that sounds like it's going to be cut, except that the money's not going to be cut, the position is, do you, maybe I just said, do you know how, do you want to spend that money?
So we haven't officially, you know, laid down the law and voted, but there's been talk about funding the technology position, because now that we have, like, the technologies, if it's not already in the building, it should be here soon. if it's not already in the building, it should be here soon, um, that feels like the highest, personally, is one person, that's our highest need, but we haven't really, that's sort of why I've been asking the questions along the way, like, where, how is the process between all the subcommittees coming together as we present the information, when do we start needing to really make some really solid decisions with the money we know we have?
So one of the things that, I'll clarify what you just said, which is, we asked for a hundred and eleven thousand dollars more to fund some technology positions, the town, over the last two annual town meetings, has actually devoted about a hundred and fifty or sixty thousand dollars towards upgrading the Fowler and Green Meadow to be as high performing technologically as the new high school. The problem is you need somebody to run the, you know, you need somebody to run all those computers, you need a technician, that is a bare minimum, and so, you know, the one position where we see an efficiency so far, that makes sense, that that would go to the bare minimum, there are other, and then there's all these other things that are in, in consideration that are important, we'd love to add more math support, we'd love to add a psych, uh, an additional counselor at Green Meadow, there's all kinds of things that are listed in that document of the things we would like to do.
So I think it's a fair statement to say that as we have our next few meetings, more of this will start to, so this, between now and the, and the Maytown meeting, it'll be fast and furious, budget, big decisions, what do we have, what do we feel confident in, so.
Just keep on coming out.
Yeah, keep on coming, this is good. More questions? Citizens comments on anything else? Mrs. Messina?
Um, but this is an awesome document, and I think this is really great, and I'll leave you with that attention, and I'll leave you with that attention, um, yes, this spreadsheet is great, but this is really good, I just have one question.
Sure.
Um, and it could be me, or if I'm not, when I'm looking at it, I think this document, and I get that it has, everything on here is a must-have, whether something's published, is there any way to join me in that?
Yeah, I think, you know, so this was our sort of first attempt, you know, we talked about it last year about.
I have one question, because I look at it, I read it down, and this is what we wanna do, 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 and it doesn't translate to me into, um, this is what we really want to do, and the rest would be great to have after this.
Like, in a section, they're not prioritized?
Correct.
Is that a good summary?
It's prioritized.
It's all good feedback, 'cause, so, you know, the principals wrote their sections, Jen wrote quite a bit, Bob did his piece, and since it's our, I call it a first draft, but it's a great, it's a, it's a, it's a ready-to-go document, it just means it will change as it changes, but I think that's really good feedback for the different authors of sections.
Because it's like, everything in here must be.
Right.
Yeah, which was great when I was talking to the town with Mary.
So the other piece of that, the other piece of that, that we attempted to do, um, when we knew, um, that there were must-haves, is we attempted to identify a funding source, um, for that, so in one of the sections, it says this, is, we're looking for efficiencies for this particular piece, um, and so, or, you know, those, so that, that, that could be, as you look through this year's document, the clue that, you know what, this has to happen, we need to do this, um, but we can certainly talk about different formatting for next year, or.
If you, well, just bring the feedback that, you know, as you're reading each author's section, um, explaining priorities when, you know, when you can do that, I think is a really good point, so, thank you. Does that make sense, was that, did I answer your question?
Yeah, I guess, I mentioned to everybody, kind of, the same way.
Yeah, well, we originally used it when we went to the budget meeting, so it was great to say to the town, here are all our needs.
Frankly, that's part of the point of this, is to say, you know, 'cause I sat on the finance committee in Maynard for a long time, and they're very thoughtful people on there, um, but sort of the idea of, um, running a school department differently than running, I don't wanna get in trouble, differently than running other departments, um, you know, this idea of, well, they just keep asking for more stuff, and it just keeps changing, part of that is to provide the narrative, to say, yeah, it's, it's gonna keep changing, and this is, and it's providing that education piece, so that it's not, when we say wish list, it's not, we want to build five new buildings and put unicorns in stables so kids can ride them, right, like, these are things we need so that we can educate your kids in the way that we feel is, is appropriate, and that's part of the purpose of that.
We cut the unicorns, gotta be reasonable. Mrs. Duddy?
I just ask about one of the positions that was suggested for Green Meadow.
Sure.
So on page thirty, is this accounting support, it said, additional administrative department, department after, operating, which will be the administrative stress of Maynard High School.
Yeah, I'll have, I have the same que, I think I know what your question is, but.
Yeah, I, I don't see how that, you know, really helps the students at Green Meadow, or it might help, you know, allocate different accounting services, per se, but, you know, to, to have the child seen every day, because the emotional and social needs of these kids is really increasing.
Yeah.
And, you know, and it's not the kids that you would typically identify, these are your typical kids coming in and having, for whatever reason, a bad start to the day.
Yep, absolutely, I, I don't wanna speak for Jen and Bob, but.
Our counselors.
Yeah, my understanding is that it's, um, so you put it into the document, um, there's a debate about, do we need an administrator, or someone on the ground, or a hybrid, um, so not speaking for these guys, but that's how it's been explained so far to me, and I think that's still a, a to be fleshed out, is from what I understand.
Yeah, so, um.
But I think it's written a little funny.
It is written a little funny, or I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's what we do.
Yeah, we end each other's sentences sometimes.
No, it's not, okay.
So I think that the principals also talks amongst themselves, and there was some debate, do we just need an additional counselor, do we need admission, additional counselor who kinda makes everything co, uh, who also may be an administrator who makes everything cohesive across the buildings, because, and there's sometimes debates between principals, this document wasn't easy to put together, you know, um, Green Meadow has been asking for an extra counselor, whether it be a guidance counselor or, or a social worker for years.
Right.
But the high school said, we just got a hundred extra kids when the eighth grade moved over, and we don't have any extra counselors, uh, so, you know, there's internal debate here, too, that would be flushed out if there was ever funding for that, um, then we would have the discussion and have the principals come and talk about, well, what do we really need, uh, but it, that's why it's worded a little awkwardly, 'cause there is some internal discussion amongst principals about what we really do need across the district.
Basically, as teachers, you're saying that it would be much more preferable to have somebody on the ground, some help.
I suppose doing this, right, I would say for the students, not for the, seeing what you see, or anything like that, for the teachers, if you know, they're supposed to.
Other comments?
I have a feed that, that hopefully you'll never have to use again, but last month, when there was the bomb threat at the high school, and the high school came over to Fowler, so many of the Fowler students who see all these high school students, and the rumor mill went crazy, and it's my understanding that there wasn't really any communication either from Mr. Mila, or even in the classroom level, and so I just, I think it's important to keep that in mind, because at eleven, twelve, you know, whatever age, I understand the fourth graders, and so I'm not saying you have to give a lot of detail.
Of course.
But something, I felt like something you should have been, you know, school-wide to stop the rumors, when there was no way that they knew that there was something going on.
Yeah.
That's a fair, that's a fair statement, thank you.
And I appreciate that, you know, I don't have kids at high school, but I appreciate the district-wide information.
Oh, that's great, that's good feedback to have.
That is great.
And hopefully not me to use it again.
Yeah, but it's good for me to bring back to our leadership team, 'cause we also had a situation where we had a whole school from Green Meadow come over to Fowler earlier, and I'm sure that's kind of alarming, too, where are all these kids coming from, 'cause they, they kinda look like us, but they're smaller.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
So it's great for us to bring that back to the Maynard leadership team.
Thank you. Anything else? Members' comments? Oh, did we miss, uh, you know, I went, it wasn't, uh, yeah, we did miss an agenda item, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go out of order. Good call.
Thanks, Justin.
I, I'm not active tonight, but I am participating.
So in your folders, there are some, um, some MOA, MOUs with a, um, school in Dizhu Sheng Tiananmen School in China, and so, um, when Principal Caro Janus went to China, we've been trying to develop a sister school relationship, and the several times we've had these discussions, um, it's always been high school to high school, what was really neat is that one of the groups that we work with, one of the vendors, they actually found a whole school district that wants to partner with us, um, so, in the past, they've always come and we've given them a tour of the high school, 'cause they were just a high school, when they showed up that day, and I think I put it in my blog, I, I, did I put it in the last blog, Colleen, the picture of the, the Chinese delegation who came, they said, we're principals from elementary, middle, and high schools, we wanna see all your school districts, so I ended up going all over, I thought it was just gonna be the high school, I spent the whole day taking this delegation to each one of the schools, they were so impressed with our school system, they would like to try and develop a sister school relationship with our schools, and so, um, oftentimes, MOUs like this are, are created, and you can see it's half in American English and half in Chinese, um, and so, uh, our school department attorney felt that, in the past, the school committee, I think, taught, gave Chuck the authority to do it, but they wanted, he wanted me to run it by you to make sure you don't mind me, um, signing an MOU saying that we'd like to at least begin talking about it, really, there's a lot of, the way it's written, it's about, you know, can we talk about teacher exchanges, can we talk about student exchanges, can we talk about curricular exchanges, um, yeah, we can talk about it, let's see if we can make it happen, and there's language in here that says that if either party wants to stop, they can. So our attorneys reviewed it, um, but he, i, in the future, he wanted to make sure that I had the authority to sign it, because really, I'm signing for the school committee, and so I, I'm here tonight to ask you if you'd mind me signing for the school committee on behalf of the, our school district to explore sister relationships with the schools from this one community, and coincidentally, in the picture of my blog, I mentioned that, um, the, uh, that particular region, we actually have a student here from that region, so she came, 'cause she speaks the same dialogue, she, she met them when they came here, um, and really enjoyed meeting with them, and apparently, it's a, a region that had, I don't know if it was some kind of natural disaster, was it an earthquake, Colleen, or something?
Yeah, it was an earthquake.
And, and the government doesn't usually provide that much support for a community, and they actually helped rebuild that community, so it must be a community that the government, the Chinese government values, but, uh, it's just neat having the connections, we actually already have a student who's from that region, they came out and wanted to visit our schools, asked if they could visit, we're always welcome to show people our schools, we're so proud of them, and then they had these documents, as they said, we'd love to start a sister school relationship with you.
Did, um, Bob, just a little information with the vendor, is there, how did they find this particular school, is it that, I'm just wondering, what?
So a lot of the different vendors have different, like, we have one vendor that has a relationship with a vocational school in Norway for media, which turned out, we had a ton of ki, kids who came, and one lived with Justin for a year, um, because we're so uniquely qualified by having WAVM to provide them with a fifteen hours instruction. This particular vendor has a relationship with a lot of different schools in different regions, and they felt like this would be a good fit for us, so, yeah.
I, I was just gonna mention, curriculum committee-wise, if this is something we pursue,